Trans Trust Authority, Enhanced Enterprise Zone, Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, Historic Preservation, Community Center Board, Planning and Zoning, and Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight. Those that are presented in this, is it a, in this resolution, are all reappointments. Any other questions for Molly on these appointments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1522.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1522.
Let me read the resolution first, and then we'll entertain that motion. A resolution approving the annual list of boards and commission's representatives for reappointment now.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1522.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. All right, the appointments are approved. Agenda number four, consideration of board appointment, a third alternate to the board of zoning adjustments, Resolution Number 1523. Molly?
Yes, this is a new appointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. It is the position as third alternate, which is unusual for most of our boards and commissions, but this is a board of five individuals. Conflicts of interest can be, can present themselves as well as quorums, and it takes a vote of four, so there are three alternates for this board. And Jody Paschlis has been contacted and is aware of this pending appointment and finds it acceptable.
I'll also add to that in my conversation with Jody, he said he would love to serve in that capacity and is also entertaining the possibility of serving as further need arises, so.
And this is his first held meeting, so, yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
So, he may never serve on this.
That's right.
Appointment. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1523. There's no resolution language attached, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution 1523 is approved. Item agenda, agenda item number five is consideration of land deed for portion of lot next to 414 South Thompson, Resolution Number 1524.
So, the building at 414 South Thompson, the property lines are the building face itself. The city owns the hitch lot that is adjacent to this building and the land past the pavement of the parking lot all the way to the building faces. So, the building has appurtenances, drainage, escape routes, doorways that swing open, just things that they really need some land that's adjacent to the building to deal with drainage issues, retaining wall, and so on. So, we have suggested deeding the grassy area, not the pavement of hitch lot itself, but the grassy area that surrounds this building to the property, so they would be able to care for those things adjacent to the building.
Any questions? All right. A resolution approving a quick clean deed to Mark and Brenda Kilgore. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1524.
I move, we approve Resolution Number 1524, consideration of land deed for portion of lot next to 414 South Thompson.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Always makes me nervous when that thing beeps. Some of you remember one of our early incidents.
Uninvited.
Yeah, uninvited guest during COVID. All right, item number six is a public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 111 North Main Street, and we will begin with the staff report from our neighborhood specialist Laura Mize prior to opening the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This first tax abatement application comes from Jeff and Lisa Watkins of Divine and Main LLC. This building is 111 North Main Street, and it is at the corner of East Excelsior and North Main, one time housed the RW Pack and Company Furniture Store, and it is a contributing building in the Hall of Waters Historic District. The owner is proposing to create two commercial spaces at the ground level and five residential spaces on the second level, and he is doing extensive interior and exterior work on this building to include electrical upgrades, roof repair, plumbing, tuck pointing, windows and doors, HVAC, painting and wood rot repair, and even a sidewalk replacement, we're hoping. He's looking into that. So, this project has been considered by the Historic Preservation Commission and also the Redevelopment Corporation, and both found that it met requirements needed. It qualifies for Level C, which provides for 100% abatement for 10 years and then 50% abatement for five years, or for the cost of the improvements. Total expenditures are projected to be $361,003.42, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this project.
Hearing no questions for Laura, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing regarding this matter.
Move to open public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 111 North Main, second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. The public hearing is open at 6:16 PM. We'll give it a few seconds for anyone who would like to speak. This is always the awkward moment. All right, hearing no public comment, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 111 North Main Street.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Public hearing is closed at 6:16 and several seconds after it opened. Item number seven is the consideration of this 353 tax abatement for 111 North Main, ordinance number 24-09-01. I will entertain a motion to take this ordinance to second reading, an ordinance approving the 111 North Main Street project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area, and approving a development agreement, ordinance number 24-09-01.
I move, we take ordinance number 24-09-01, consideration of 353 tax abatement for 111 North Main, to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for the second reading, an ordinance approving the 111 North Main Street project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a redevelopment agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-09-01.
I move that we approve ordinance number 24-09-01, consideration of 353 tax abatement for 111 North Main.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. The ordinance is approved. Agenda item number eight is a public hearing on the 353 tax abatement for 115 East Broadway, and again, our neighborhood specialist Laura Mize will present the staff report prior to opening a public hearing on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a tax abatement application brought by our neighbors, Jody and Linda Pazlic, next door at Other Trails Coffee and Goods. They have also done interior and exterior improvements on their commercial building located here on East Broadway. On the ground level is a commercial coffee shop, and upstairs is a short-term rental. They've done improvements to the entryway and HVAC system and other interior improvements, as well as the back courtyard of the property. This tax abatement application and all the improvements were considered by the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, and found to meet all the requirements needed. Per the commercial guidelines, this qualifies for Level 8.2, which provides for 100% tax abatement for 10 years or for the cost of the improvements. Projected expenditures are $27,095.48, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this project or application.
Hearing no questions for Laura, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 115 East Broadway.
Move to open public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 115 East Broadway.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Public hearing is open at 6:20 PM.
So, that Jeopardy music?
Silence is such an awkward thing.
It can be.
We're so used to noise. All right, hey, the clock turned over, so I hear no public comment, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing for 353 tax abatement for 115 East Broadway.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Public hearing is closed at 6:21 PM. Moving on to agenda item number nine, which is our consideration of this 353 tax abatement for 115 East Broadway, ordinance number 24-09-02. I will entertain a motion to take this ordinance, an ordinance approving the 115 East Broadway Street project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a development agreement. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-09-02 to second reading.
I move, we take ordinance number 24-09-02, consideration of 353 tax abatement for 115 East Broadway, to second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for the second reading, an ordinance approving the 115 East Broadway Street project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a redevelopment agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-09-02.
Move to approve ordinance number 24, tax 09 or tax 02, consideration of 353 abatement for 115 East Broadway.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance is approved. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
That niner and tax stuff always serves me.
Sorry.
I bet you give time and military time also.
Yes, I do.
I wouldn't suspect it. Okay, item number 10 on our agenda is an exciting item, consideration of preliminary, and I'm going to have to scroll away to read all this, and final plat, and an infrastructure improvement agreement for the flats at Coach Crossing, ordinance number 24-09-03. And Melinda Mahaffey, our community development director, will give the details of this to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The Planning and Zoning Commission has for your consideration this evening the preliminary and final plat for the flats at Coach Crossing. This is approximately a 10-acre parcel that sits on the south side of Tracy Avenue, abutting 69 Highway. And what the applicant is proposing to do is to subdivide it into this particular parcel into four separate lots, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and then a stormwater management retention tract as well. The stormwater management retention tract is for lots 2, 3, and 4, and Lot 1 will have its stormwater detention addressed at a time in which it is actually developed. This first phase is for medium-density residential housing, and it is proposed only on Lot 2, which we will discuss under the site plan. The preliminary and final plat has public water that, currently there's a 6-inch water main that serves this property. The property does not have adequate water flow or pressure to support it, so an upgrade to a water main that is an 8-inch water main from Jesse James Road is necessary and is a part of the preliminary and final plat and a development agreement. The sanitary sewer actually crosses the property and is adequate, and stormwater management has, the detention's already been proposed and meets all of the requirements that are necessary for the developments of lots 2, 3, and 4. So, our future land use map and our comprehensive plan all have identified this property as a medium residential property, medium residential apartment property. It's been zoned correctly and has been that way for quite some time. The final plat has a couple of things just to keep in mind, and one is that Lot 1 does not have access to Tracy Avenue, and that is actually called out on the final plat. The access to Lot 1 will come through, will come through lots 2, 3, and 4. So, that is actually identified on the plan for you, so you will see that. And staff is, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously has approved this plan and has asked that it be brought forward for your consideration this evening. I would entertain any questions you have on the preliminary or final plat.
Any questions for Melinda? All right, again, this is an ordinance that will require two readings. For the first reading, an ordinance approving a preliminary plat and final plat and approving an infrastructure improvement agreement for the flats at Coach Crossing, a subdivision in the city of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-09-03 to second reading.
I make a motion to take ordinance 24-09-03, consideration of preliminary and final plat and an infrastructure improvement agreement for the flats at Coach Crossing, to second reading.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for the second reading, an ordinance approving a preliminary plat and final plat and approving an infrastructure improvement agreement for the flats at Coach Crossing, a subdivision in the city of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-09-03.
I move that we approve ordinance number 24-09-0, did I say 3?
3.
All right, 03, I'm sorry. Consideration of the preliminary and final plat and infrastructure improvement agreement for the flats at Coach Crossing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number 24-09-03 is approved. And number 11 is a like ordinance, consideration of site plan for the flats at Coach Crossing, ordinance number 24-09-04. And again, Melinda Mahaffey will present details of this ordinance to the council.
In 2022, when the city council approved the code review for our zoning code, one of the things that was approved in that was a site plan review process. And when we have a major site plan, it needs to come before the city council for approval. So, we come before you this evening for that reason. We believe the flats at Coach Crossing is very, very much an anticipated, as well as a major site plan. And this is for a three-story, 40-unit multifamily residential structure that is on Lot 2, and the property is proposed to be about 50 feet from the existing single-family residence. There is a recommendation for some landscaping between those two parcels, and the, the property is served by a private parking lot, so those are not public roads, those are a private parking lot and drive, and they were required to have 82 and 1/2 parking spaces. They've exceeded that with 90 parking spaces, and they have left, left land in lots 3 and 4 for future additional senior housing development or housing development at a later time. So, this, this property that you see this evening and this, and the site plan that you see shows that layout, and you also have some elevation that you can see as well. The property is going to be a beautiful property. DHTC is a very qualified company, and we're really pleased to be working with them on this project. And the Planning and Zoning Commission brings to you this evening for your consideration a unanimous recommendation for approval of the site plan. And the applicants, Tammy Creason-Stekling and Riley Shantz are online, as well as their architect, Scott Almond, and would entertain any questions you might have.
The landscaping that you said has been suggested, is that part of the requirement? Is it in Phase 1? Is it in the final phase, specific to the houses that?
Yes. So, that actual landscaping plan is a part of their building permit, so it's utilized inside the building permit. And when I say 50 feet, it's 50 feet to the property line. I believe when we measured this, it was 150 feet to the closest house. So, while they'll still be able to see that out their backyard, there is a significant landscaping plan to differentiate between those, those single-family residences.
Any other questions for Melinda? Okay, again, this is an ordinance that will require two readings. An ordinance approving a site plan for the flats at Coach Crossing located at the southeast corner of Tracy Avenue and US 69 Highway at 1117 Tracy Avenue in the city of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-09-04 to second reading.
Make a motion to take ordinance 24-09-04, consideration of site plan for the flats at Coach Crossing, to second reading.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for the second reading, an ordinance approving a site plan for the flats at Coach Crossing located at the southeast corner of Tracy Avenue and US 69 Highway at 1117 Tracy Avenue in the city of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-09-04.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move, we approve ordinance number 24-09-04, consideration of site plan for the flats at Coach Crossing.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number 24-09-04 is approved. Thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Tammy, for your investment in our community.
Yes.
All right. And the last but not least item on our agenda is our financial review and our revenue report for July by our wonderful finance director, Monda Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, within your council packet for your review is July 2024 revenue report and expenditures. And the appropriations within your packet are in accordance with the city's purchasing policy and are as follows. Appropriations for July the 3rd, $298,565.72. Appropriations for July 11th of $156,813.99. Appropriations for July the 18th of $69,610.22. And appropriations for July the 25th of $282,962.62. Payroll, $715,000 for $433,398.72. And payroll for July 31st, $449,627.38. For total appropriations, $1,690,978.65. And within your packet is also a revenue report, 35 pages long, and on page 35 detailing your revenues, total revenues of $2,841,579.55.
Any questions for Monda? Hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, that is for review only, does not require a vote. With that, we will move into remarks. We'll begin with our city manager.
In conversations with our design team for the Rays projects, they will be taking the access management plan for discussion before the West Side CID, I believe, next week, and they're trying to schedule a listening post for the community to come and view what that looks like and present their comments and ideas. It's not a final plan, obviously, it's, it's food for thought and for input to be received. So, today they presented a possible date for that listening post of October 2nd, and it's from 11 to 2. So, idea being that people could drop in anytime during that time and speak to one of the designers or look at the plan and then see what thoughts they had or comments they might have about how that might impact anything that they are involved in. So, that will be something they'll market, but wanted you to hear that date and plan for that. Brian had suggested that that time works better than an evening. People tend to be able to have better attendance during that time, so we're shooting for that. We don't have a place selected yet, so that was just a date they threw out today.
Okay. Do you know if there will, there will be pictures, or is this just an open conversation?
So, they gave us a sketch of what the access management looks like along Business Route 10, so I know it will certainly contain that. It possibly could contain more than that, so you can visualize different intersections or different driveways. or different driveways. And while, you know, it may work fine today, when you introduce bicycles and people, it needs to be safe for everyone involved, and if you happen to dodge, you know, or look all directions constantly, it doesn't seem like a very pleasant walk. So anyway, you know, it's a big change up to introduce pedestrians in an area that hasn't been welcomed to them. So, well, we'll just have to see what comments we receive.
Yeah, those accesses are so wide. I've seen people just flying off of the highway.
You think about them differently.
You don't have to slow down.
Yeah, you think about them differently when you know to look.
Yeah.
And while we all know how to do it, it's, if you're going to put people in the middle of the whole time, it might change up how things work.
Okay. Any other remarks, Molly?
No.
All right. I'll entertain remarks from the council. We'll begin with Reggie.
What we're talking about here is, you know, a paradigm shift in how we approach transportation. And I only first want to admit that when you wipe out a lane of traffic for a bike that I never see used, that just drives me nuts. So I'm hoping that we can get enough folks that will use this for there to be pedestrians or bike usage, because there's a lot to be said for that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've seen people walk up and down, you know, Carney Road, 10 Highway, whatever you want to call it, and sometimes they're almost in peril, you know, they're so close to the traffic flow. And this will be a really neat transition, and like I say, it's different than what we ever voted before.
Yeah.
And the challenge will be the change, because the famous last seven words of any organization, we've never done it like that before. Okay, we'll go to the opposite end. Councilman Rennie?
Well, hopefully, next September, a year from now, we'll be hosting the connecting entrepreneurial communities, but we only have 12 days to get votes. And we've got to outvote, of course, Maryville and Perryville, Missouri. So I just encourage everyone, encourage others to vote, and remember, the votes don't have to be citizens of Excelsior Springs. I'm contacting my friends in California and having them vote.
Let's see. Yeah, and I stand corrected, I think I stated maybe at the last council meeting that it was, the votes are according to devices, but it's according to IP address. So I can take the same device and go next door and vote again, so. And then they'll sort it all out in the end.
I think by the time you get to St. Louis, you're going to want to vote.
Better get started.
Yeah.
Is that all you have, Garrett?
Yes.
All right. Councilman McGovern?
Mayor, I apologize to you. I know you've got some words that you want to say, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention for the record the loss of a true Excelsior Springs treasure. On August 20, Ambrose Buckman passed away. Ambrose lived his life like everyone else should strive to copy. He gave of himself in service to this community and the many organizations that he was a member of. He made many invaluable contributions to the many organizations that he was a part of, but my focus tonight is on his service to this community as a member of the city council. He served on the council from 2008 until 2020, with five of those years as mayor and a number of years as Mayor Pro Tim. He earned the respect of the citizens while remaining humble, sincere, and selfless. He was known for being frank, honest, sincere, but unpretentious. He always made his decisions based on what was good for the community as a whole. Over the years, I have learned a great deal from Ambrose, and I hope that others have as well. Ambrose, you are missed. That's all I have.
Very nice.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate those words. Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Echo that as well. You know, it's always humbling to sit here on this council and think about those that have served prior to when we've been here. So just appreciate all the efforts there. On a different note, Friday is Lyrics on the Lawn. I think it's the last Lyrics on the Lawn, and so just invite the community. And tomorrow's Trash Day.
An event.
That is a big event, because I flew in from Phoenix this afternoon, and I opened my trash can, and I went, whoo! So I'm glad it's coming tomorrow. All right. Well, I'm just...
Just to add, you know, at Ambrose's funeral, his daughters well-spoke about the man with a big heart.
He did have a big heart.
Yeah.
His smile, and that was going to be my comment. I'm going to read something that John and I, Councilman McGovern and I, picked up at Mid-America Regional Council. We attended a seminar called How to Accomplish Your Agenda as an Elected Official. And the first thing that I noted when on our way over, I told John, I said, John, I really don't have an agenda, I don't feel like, other than to continue the wonderful tradition that has been set before us. And every one of us at this diocese stand or sit on the shoulders of those who have gone before us. And Ambrose gave us some tall marching orders. This thing is called the Athenian Oath, and I want you to listen to this, because when I read this again this afternoon, I thought of Ambrose Buckman. And I will always miss Ambrose's laugh. He could walk into a room, and you knew he was there when he laughed, and his smile, but more than that, his service. He was just a great servant to the community and to his church. This is called the Athenian Oath, and we could scratch this out and write Excelsior Council's oath. But listen to this and see if it doesn't describe Ambrose. "We will never bring disgrace on this our city by an act of dishonesty or cowardice. We will fight for the ideals and sacred things of the city both alone and with many. We will revere and obey the city's laws and will do our best to incite a like reverence and respect in those above us who are prone to annul them or set them at naught. We will strive unceasingly to quicken the public sense of civic duty. Thus, in all these ways, we will transmit this city not only, not less, but greater and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." I read that in honor of Ambrose Buckman. May he rest in peace. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned.